Welcome.
Great Scott.
Here.
Mark Cerber.
Present.
Ron Vaughn.
Present.
Rebecca. Any David.
Here.
Item two additions or corrections to the agenda. We do have a couple additions. Under unfinished business, we are going to add the medical examiner contract. And then under motions for adoption, we are going to add the memorandum to withdraw from Oglema County from Kirtland Community College District. From our council. Any other additions or corrections?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with changes.
I have a question. Do we need to add the close session?
It's on the new.
I realize it's on the new one, but.
I didn't print you a new one.
That's okay.
It's item, we have item A, the organizational meeting from January thirteenth, the close session meetings from January thirteenth in the committee of the whole. Yeah, there's three of them in there.
Okay.
We have a motion for Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
With support from Commissioner Cerber. On a favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three A, review of minutes from the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Organizational meeting minutes.
I read, I reviewed those minutes and I'll make a motion to accept them as presented. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve the January thirteenth, twenty twenty organizational meeting minutes. Any discussion? On a favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three B, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, closed session meeting minutes. I believe those are all in front of us when we got here.
I would make two corrections.
Okay. Yes, we're on the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We're on the close session.
Getting ahead of myself.
Still.
Did everybody have a chance to review this?
Still a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the call session.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cerber with support from Commissioner Scott to approve the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, closed session meeting minutes. On a favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three B, January twentieth, twenty-two, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Commissioner Cerber.
In two places, it references Mr. Rebecca as the co-chair, or he's actually the vice chair. So I would.
Oh, hey, good catch.
Like to have those corrected to vice chair in both instances.
And I seen something.
Co-chair.
Under public comment, I'm just wondering if it should say something utilizing towing.
He talked about businesses in general.
Okay, okay.
Yes, he did.
Okay.
Talking about snow plowing.
A lot of.
It was all.
I might not have heard of all the, all the conversation. I caught it on Zoom afterwards, so.
Okay.
Okay. Any, any other corrections?
None.
We have a motion to.
Approve with corrections. Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cerber with support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve the January twentieth, twenty twenty-two committee of the whole meeting minutes with the discussed changes. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Did you say yes?
Motion carries item four, public comment. But have come, bite them. Item four, public comment on agenda item matters. This is on agenda items only. State your name for the record. Speak only to the chairperson. Stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. This is again, agenda items only. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Item five correspondence. We received correspondence from Marquette County related to voting access and the election infrastructure. And from the Oglema County Planning and Zoning related to the twenty twenty-one annual report. Those have been received and filed. Item six, action on consent calendar. I think item seven B and C can be combined. Are you guys okay with that?
B and C. I don't have a problem with A, B, C, E, F and G.
Yeah, I had some questions. On DNC, are you guys okay with DNC?
Which one do you want? A, B and C? Is that okay?
B and C.
Yes, B and C is fine.
So item seven B is a resolution to appoint members to the Oglema County Planning Commission. This resolution is sponsored by the Planning and Zoning Administrator. Members of the Planning Commission must be approved by a majority vote of the Board of Commissioners. Section fifteen of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires a county planning commission consists of five, seven, nine, or eleven members who represent of important segments of the community. The terms of several members of the Planning Commission have expired and five members have confirmed their desire for reappointment. If the resolution is approved, the following persons will be appointed to the Planning Commissions. Mike Kelly, George Goodchild, Scott Bell, Richard Bashelder, Don.
Dan.
Dan Dumzalaski.
He'll tell you.
Pardon me. I'm sorry, say it.
Dumzalaski.
Okay, thank you. And Rob Reed. Item seven C is a resolution to appoint members to the Oglema County Zoning Board of Appeals. This resolution is sponsored by the Planning and Zoning Administrator. Section six oh one of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act requires creation of a zoning board of appeals through municipal zoning ordinance. Section twenty dot one dot B of the Oglema County's zoning ordinance establishes the Oglema County Zoning Board of Appeals consisting of not less than three and not more than seven members. The terms of Linda Miller and George Goodchild have expired and both confirmed a desire for reappointment. Upon approval of the proposed resolution, both members will be reappointed to terms that expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve both resolutions. For what she's made.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Cerber to approve resolutions seven B and seven C. Is there any discussion? We'll cover it. Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Yes. Scott.
Yes.
Resolution approved. We're going to go to seven A, resolution to authorize concealed pistol license fund purchase. This resolution is sponsored by the county clerk. The Michigan Firearms Act requires that each county shall establish a concealed pistol licensing fund for the deposit of fees collected for the county clerk. Expenditures from the concealed pistol licensing fund are limited by statute for used by the county clerk only for the cost of administering the firearms act. The proposed resolution authorizes the purchase of desk and related furnishings as quoted by Office Central at a total cost not to exceed sixteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars.
I'd make a motion to approve resolutions presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cerber.
I'll second.
We have a support from Commissioner Scott. Is there any discussion?
No, it's clearly talked about in the committee's whole meeting. I'm satisfied with that.
It was. I rewatched that and you brought up the security in the office. Who all has access to, is it just you guys that have access to the getting in there, getting in your office, the keypad? Because I know we brought it up in the security, in this couple of security meetings.
Commissioners can, can't they?
We have forty-six people that are allowed in our office.
Oh, really? Holy smokes.
And that is cut, we cut way back.
Yeah, they have keypads that can just walk in. Okay, so this, which I agree upon, I agree upon this. My other question that I had is, is so this is to protect personal protected information on documents, which I highly encourage. With, is there any policies or procedures as far as keeping information? People come up to the clerk's office for, for very personal things, for CPLs, for personal protection orders, for divorces. Does your office, is there any policy or procedures to keep that information that people come up there with confidential? So that verbally, that information that, that people are, are doing for employees, that information has to remain confidential. Is there a policy procedure that, that is in existence?
All of that is public information.
Okay.
So anybody can anybody can come up and ask, well, the CPLs are not really public information, like the divorce, any of the court filings, those are all public information. Anybody can come and ask if something's been filed. They can see the files, they can.
The FOIA?
Basically, yeah. Unless they're suppressed cases.
So I guess that's my question. Again, like personal protection divorces, that kind of thing. I mean, that, that can involve people's safety.
Yeah, um, well, stuff like, so like personal protection and we do actually get it a lot with a lot of the family court stuff. They request their addresses be kept confidential. So those are not given to the public. And and it's not like people come in and say all the time, can I see this or has this been filed? It's it's not a regular thing. Yeah.
I understand that. Again, my question, and I'm in healthcare, so obviously everything is, is top notch confidential as far as HIPAA violations and everything like that. But again, when, when someone comes up in, in, in files for whatever it is, they're, they're filing, there definitely can be a, a safety issue there. And that's a period of time before that information becomes public, correct? Or is that once?
Once it's filed, it's public unless.
Court suppressed?
Um, yeah, criminal criminal stuff sometimes doesn't get suppressed until their sentencing. It just depends on what what they're sentenced to, what their plea is or, or what, but pretty much as soon as it's filed, it's public.
So does your office have any, do you have any, since, since you're I can't even think, the, the head of the department.
Broadcasting things, no.
Well, that's, that's my, that's, that's my question is what is your, when you, you have, you've had new, new hirees, what is your policy procedure? Is there one? I asked him on this. Is there a policy procedure that, that new hirees have to review, sign as far as any type of confidentiality?
I don't think there is, the internet, right? That's the only.
Social media.
Social media, yeah.
The documents recorded in the clerk's office unless it's a hideover or suppressed case is public record. And you can ask and see those documents.
I guess I'm not sure if you're seeing my point. Um, again, people's safety could be.
We don't have a policy in place for that.
That was my question. So we need to find out if that is something that you and I talked a little bit about that today, if, if that's, or this week, yeah, it was today, I think about this. Because again, when someone comes in and files this type of information, there's typically a period of time when they think they have time to find a safety net. Um.
Jenny, if the customer came to the clerk's office and they had concerns for their safety, we would probably direct them to a.
I understand that, but that also may not be the place where they want to discuss that at a counter in a hallway. So my, my question is, is there something in writing for, for, for?
Okay.
That's what I wanted to know. Okay.
What point does it become FOIA? At any point is there that they have to ask file FOIA papers to get information?
Um, Tim, do you know the answer to that?
Well, if we have the document in our possession, it's a public document. The moment we have it in our possession, it's subject to FOIA. Now, there are documents that have restrictions on them. Clerk was talking about some of those, particularly with court records, you know, the courts will control how their documents are released. For our records, there are certain things, obviously, that are going to be redacted or off limits. If there's a social security number, we're going to redact that. Just like a driver's license and some of those other identifying things will redact them. But the document itself, we have to then release to the public, redacted or, or not, you know, depending on what it is. And we have time frame to do that in. I think it's generally five business days to respond, or we get an extension for ten additional days. But bottom line is, if we have it, it's subject to FOIA.
But it's still got to take time for FOIA turnaround. You don't just hand somebody a piece of paper and.
Well, typically, but if it was, if somebody were to come in here right now and want to, say, I am submitting a FOIA for a copy of the agenda and there's one sitting here, I'm likely to hand it to them.
Well, that's fair, but we're talking about pretty personal information. You're not going to hand that to them.
It may, something may be redacted, so you've got to allow the clerk's office to time to redact.
Right.
So if I can walk in and I just want to know about somebody from five years ago that had a divorce, that, that's what you're bringing up.
I also brought up personal protections.
And I'm just, I'm just not related to them at all or anything. I just come walking in.
You can get it. It's your, right. It's public.
But it is, but what I'm asking is, are you just going to hand me the file through the window? And I can look at it?
No, I'm gonna.
Ask me to write out a FOIA request?
No, if it's a, if you're doing a search on somebody, I'm gonna, it's, there's a five dollar search fee. You'll come in the office on the counter and we visibly watch you go through the file.
Okay.
You want copies, you can take copies.
Add a charge.
Add a charge, yeah. So don't give them out in the hallway, the files to go through themselves.
Okay, okay, but I guess then, I guess we're at this point of some personal information like numbers being given out. I mean.
Well, and it's.
At one point.
It's a fine line because this personal protection information stuff, it technically doesn't start until April. So anything prior to April
Oh, okay.
is not our response. Well, if they don't want it known, they will file it without the information on it or blacked out.
Okay.
But like we know in our office that any social security numbers are not to be given out. So like as we're going, I mean, we would not give them the social security number.
Okay, okay. I got one other unrelated question to that, to that line. The fire, fire rating on, on these are these, are these fire rate, rated, rated filing cabinets or anything, any type of rating? I'm not saying fireproof or anything. I'm just saying, is there any rating at all?
Don't know about that.
I was asked by somebody and, and so I'm bringing, bringing it up.
I can find that out. I don't know that I was ever told if they were or not.
Danger of keeping files aren't just danger from somebody taking them and the fire takes them.
I don't know the answer to that. I can get it for you.
Yeah, okay. That's fine. Just asking. Somebody asked me.
Any other discussion?
No, I don't have any.
I want to look into that too.
Good job. That's interesting. Everything.
Any other discussion?
No.
We'll cover it.
Any David?
Yes. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Cerber.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Item seventy, resolution to appoint Commissioner Cerber, or Commissioner Scott, did you have something?
I just told the clerk how easy it was to get that done.
Item seventy, resolution to appoint an administrative secretary. This resolution is sponsored by the Personnel and Policy Committee. On November ninth, twenty twenty-one, the Board of approved resolution twenty dash one four seven to establish an hourly pay schedule for the administrative secretary position and to authorize a budget transfer in anticipation of hiring a person to fill that position. The administrative secretary is an at-well position that serves at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners under supervision of the county administrator. The Personnel and Policy Committee interviewed five candidates to fill the position and recommended approval of a resolution to appoint Mary Childress as administrative secretary. Is that how you pronounce it?
Yeah. Especially since I'm on the personnel committee, I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
I will support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Cerber. Is there any discussion? She accepted the position, correct?
She did. Yes.
Okay, and you sent us an email. There's just a couple of days that she already has spoken for.
Right, yeah, a couple of lead dates that were already committed to personal issues.
She starts what day?
If you pass the resolution, she'll start Monday.
Really first.
Has she been in to meet everybody or not till this is?
She's been in to turn in paperwork.
So she's past her physical? This is a, this a hundred percent, we're good.
We're good. Yes.
We'll cover it. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Cerber.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David. Yes. Item seven C, excuse me, seventy, resolution to amend the Oglema County COVID Preparedness and Response Plan. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator. On May twenty-eight, twenty twenty, the Oglema County Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty dash oh one to adopt the COVID Preparedness and Response Plan as required under state and local orders. On December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, the CDC issued guidance to shorten recommended isolation and quarantine periods for the general population. Approval of the resolution amended to the plan with revisions to reflect guidance provided by the CDC.
Make a motion that we accept the resolutions presented. Support.
Motion from Commissioner Cerber with support from Commissioner Vaughn. Any discussion? I reviewed that. It was pretty simple. Basically, you changed wording from should or muster to encouraged is all that I, I seen in that. So I'm sure that that was quite a relief for employees and yourself.
Tim, did Brad meet with you? I know he expressed some concern, like a couple of issues, and he said he was going to talk to you about it.
I have not heard.
Okay.
From Brad.
All right.
Yeah, I didn't see anything. I.
I looked, I didn't see anything jump out to me, and then Brad mentioned that he had a couple of things he was going to talk to Tim, and I just wondered if.
And that can change from day to day, right?
It can. Let's hope it doesn't.
Any further discussion? We'll cover it. Mark Cerber.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries item seven F, resolution to accept life insurance quote. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator. Recently approved collective bargaining agreements with sheriff, command officers, road patrol duties and corrections officers included provisions for employer-provided life insurance and accidental death and dismemberment benefits. The county's insurance advisor sought and received quotes to provide required insurance coverage. The proposed resolution accepts a quote received from UNOM to provide insurance coverage for bargaining unit members.
I'd make a motion, we accept the resolution.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cerber.
Support.
With support from Commissioner Vaughn. Discussion? I, I talked to Tim about this. I think that was today as well. I looked through this and I was disappointed in the amount of life insurance, I, I guess. I, I called him just to make sure, I guess I was reading it correctly. The amount that's being offered to these individuals is, is very, very low. I, I was shocked by that. The amount that is costing us is minimal. That's not the point. I, I think the point is, and so I actually called him to find out if they're able to purchase more life insurance on their own. And that wasn't, you weren't sure, you said?
Yeah, the short answer is yes, and we could make arrangements for that to occur. The resolution that's presented in the quote, it covers us in terms of what our obligation was under the contract. And just by way of just quick background, groups that will receive the insurance or at least eligible to were formerly under a plan with the Teamsters Union through their welfare fund that provided not only health insurance, but the life insurance and accidental death and dismemberment. And when the Teamsters dropped them, you know, clearly the, the health insurance that was provided subsequent didn't include that. So that's why we had to go out to bid this. The coverages, as low as they are in this quote, are actually higher than what we obligated ourselves to under the contract. Now, why would we do such a thing? Well, this is as low as UNOM will go. So it really comes out to, you know, not much of a choice there, but as the chair said, this is not an expensive benefit. And this is something we certainly can revisit, you know, for future, if we want to provide something that's higher than what's offered in this particular quote. But to answer the question is, yes, the commissioner, the employees will be able to, if they want to buy additional insurance, we can make arrangements for that to happen. The corrections contract says this will be through payroll deduction for the corrections officers. So, you know, that can happen there. Yeah, maybe some financial gymnastics will have to do to make it occur, but if a corrections officer wanted a higher amount of coverage through payroll deduction, we could probably arrange for that too. We would just have to work through the carrier to make sure all of our i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
We also got standing.
Right, right. Go a whole other voluntary benefit. We could, we could do that.
Is the cost on that very much?
I, you know, I didn't look at costs. I cannot imagine it would be very much. And just for everybody's benefit, even with this coverage, it's thirty-one cents per thousand dollars of salary. So it's not a lot of money. You know, for the county to pay out. So if we were to double that, you know, just using the arithmetic, you know, sixty-two cents per thousand.
Well, I'm, I'm saying for them to purchase additional on top of it is what my, my question is, I guess.
Yeah, I, I don't have a direct answer to that.
Can you look into that? I, I was really disappointed, honestly, in those numbers. And that's a discussion I had with you about that today. A lot of these new individuals are young individuals, I'm sure, with families and kids, and the amount of coverage a family couldn't even live on for a year. It, it was very low.
Yeah, I agree. It's low. We, you know, when we dissected the amount of the benefit, while in negotiations, we, we just said we would agree to do what was done with the Teamsters agreement without really looking at the Teamster agreement to know what those coverages were, but we all agreed. So, you know, that's, that's what we quoted. But I concur, and I committed to the chair when we spoke this morning to check into this a little deeper and see what else we could do. At least bring the numbers and we can talk from there.
Something none of us like to think about, but unfortunately could happen at any point in time and, and people need to make sure their families are taken care of and their kids, so.
Well, is this, is this coverage beyond just the employee?
Right, what we bargained was the employees were covered to a specific amount and then spouses and dependents were covered at lower levels from there. So you've got those three levels of coverage. They, obviously, the employee would name the beneficiary, which we would assume was the spouse and, but that would be their call.
Yeah, but it's very, very low. And that's not a typical for like, I carry my kids in, in myself, of course. Typically, you can only get a max coverage on, on your kids, which typically isn't enough to cover the funeral, as I know, but, uh, um, yeah, we, I, I think we hate to open a can of worms there, but I think that definitely needs to be looked at.
Yeah, I think the employees appreciate that too. So it's good all the way around.
Okay, uh, do we, any other discussion?
Are we okay with the plan then presented?
We are, but Tim's just going to do a little more. He said yes. I asked him about that today. Go ahead and, and go forward with this resolution, and then he can just do more research on this going forward.
Okay.
Did you guys look at that coverage and how low that is?
I do.
No, I didn't look at it.
Hasn't changed in probably thirty years.
Barely cover your funeral.
We dropped, we dropped most of the life insurance three years ago in the contract talks.
That's important to me.
That's important to a lot of people, but it's.
We have the option to get our own, though.
Yes, you do. We, we made that available to.
Yeah, what's the cost on that? That was my question. Is it, is it expensive? Is it?
No, it was a pretty low cost.
It's not bad. Do you know off the top of your head? I can't remember.
It's a higher rate than what the employer was paying to cover this at that time, as the employee expense is higher, a higher rate than the employer cost was. It is a voluntary, it's offered through Cincinnati. Any, any of our employees are eligible to enroll.
But we didn't even get a hundred. Well, I, I know that we didn't get a hundred percent participation on a voluntary basis.
Because the rates were higher.
I'd just like to see what those rates are.
They probably called what's his name on TV and got the nine ninety-five.
I think I paid thirty dollars every two weeks or something. It's, it's pretty minute anyways. Anyways, all right, we'll do a little more. Any other discussion on that?
It's.
It's.
You got something?
I can say out loud how much it is, right?
Don't ask me any questions.
Public information. You're the one that's got the public information all the time.
I don't know.
I pay less a month than you did.
Oh, how much is your coverage? My, my, what I do is I do a year and a half worth of my pay to cover. Year and a half, I figure, is what I cover for my life insurance.
Yeah, yeah, it's probably a better deal.
But I won't make it, you know, again, you never know, been through it, lived through it, so. Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote. Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Item seventy, resolution to authorize the issuance of refunding bonds not to exceed five million dollars. This resolution is proposed by the county administrator on November ninth, twenty twenty one, the board of commissioners approved resolution twenty dash one four five to approve a letter of engagement with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors LLC to perform financial consulting on the corrections facility twenty twenty two refunding bond. The proposed resolution will authorize bonds of the county aggregating the principal sum of not to exceed five million dollars to be issued and sold pursuant to the provisions of Act thirty four and other applicable statutory provisions for the purpose of refunding all or part of the prior correctional facility bonds. Refunding the prior bond will result in savings to the county and will not extend the redemption period. Sir, did you want to come up? Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Let me do it.
Come on up. Come on up and and get your name and.
Good evening, I'm the chair, members of the board, county administration. Thanks for having me here tonight to discuss this. My name is Eric McLaughlin. I'm a partner with Dickinson Wright. I'm a member of their public finance group. The resolution before you tonight has been prepared in accordance with the bond specifications that have been provided by Baker Tilly, the county's financial advisor, and does four important things. First, it authorizes the issuance of the bonds. It pledges the county's limited taxable faith and credit to repay the bonds. And it pledges, I'm sorry, it establishes the parameters within which the bonds can be issued and delegates authority to the administrator and the treasurer to take the required actions and sign the required documents to complete the transaction. A brief overview. Is there any questions to be?
I I reviewed them last night and I I called Tim on the the questions that I had. I guess I was just surprised just to see the different expiration dates on those and the different amounts. The interest on those, it's not locked in, correct?
Currently fixed, a fixed interest rate. And so right now, Baker Tilly is estimating that the interest rates would be anywhere from just less than a percent to two and a quarter percent. That's, that's based on what they view as the current market interest rates factoring in the county's expected credit rating plus some amount of buffer in there to give you what they believe to be a somewhat conservative estimate of what the the interest rate will be.
So it is a locked-in interest rate once all of this is done?
Once they're sold, it would be a locked-in.
Yeah, so what what's contemplated right now are bonds that would be repaid over fifteen years. So you'd have an annual principal payment. You'd have two interest payments per year. I believe we're looking at May and November, so there'd be like a May one principal payment and a November one principal and interest payment, or it could be, it could be May that has both the interest and principal. That would be, that's been structured, so you pay approximately the same total debt service each year for all fifteen years. And beyond that, I can get, I can have Andy Campbell get more specific with you about how he constructed the estimates. That's, that's outside the scope of what I do, but I'm just, I'm just describing what he's presenting to me in terms of the the origin, the preliminary estimate for the savings and the debt service structure.
So what I read, though, on the, on all of those was right around six million, but we're not exceeding five million.
Right. So the six million number was the original bond from twenty twelve. We've obviously made payments every year, two payments a year since then. I believe this is our first opportunity to rebond. I think you have to have a ten-year period before they allow that, just thinking back to some other bonds that I've been involved with in the past. So this is the first time we've been able to take advantage of that. Fortunately, interest rates are, in this case, fortunately, they're at a historic low, so we could take advantage of that now. And by refinancing, our estimates are twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar savings each year moving forward to the time these bonds are paid off. I believe in twenty thirty-eight. Don't know that any of us at the DIAZ will be here except for maybe Brack in twenty thirty-eight, but there'll be a party when that happens.
Better be. Yeah, like the jury. I do.
So if this bond resolution were adopted tonight, then the next step would be for, for me and Baker Tilly and the county administrator and treasurer to work through preparing the county's preliminary official statement, which is the document that gets used to market the bonds to investors. There'd be a notice of sale published in a trade publication relating to bonds. Then there will be a bond sale approximately February twenty second. After that, we'll prepare the closing documents and the the deal will close approximately early March, at which time I'm gonna have the proceeds in hand and can be applied to refunding the prior bonds.
There's really no downfall to this.
No, not for us, no.
I'd make a motion that we adopt the resolution as presented. That's important.
Commissioner Serbeks made the motion with support from Christopher Vaughn. Any further discussion? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Motion carries item seven H claims. We have bills in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and forty-two cents. Correct?
I reviewed the claims. Got a few notations here, appropriations, that was an audit. DARPA money, some of that went to Morris Construction.
I see. Is that the final bill?
One more coming.
That was a big one.
Circuit Court, some of that was Roscommon Courts. See. Court House and Grounds was fairly high, that was Owen. Equalization was assessment, mailings was fairly high. Indigent Council is always high. Jail looked like it was mostly medical and food. When I say medical, that's the medical staff.
Yeah. The monthly.
Contract. Pardon?
The contract. Monthly contract, yeah.
Yeah.
Are we paying that monthly now? Do we agree in quarterly? Is everything taken care of there?
I believe we're invoiced monthly.
Okay.
Medical exam is quarterly. And the last two I had was one was transit and that was an audit and then road patrol mileage. There's a vehicle, I think that was repaired. That's all I have. Make a motion that we accept them as presented.
Hey. We have a motion, Commissioner Vaughn, with support from Commissioner Serbeks. Any discussion? I had a couple of questions. That was the, was that the the bill I seen in there from Stevenson? That was for the audit?
Yes.
Is that the one-time thing is, sort of?
I believe so. They're close. We expect to have the audit presentation in March.
Okay.
They don't, they don't seem to be here like they were in past years. I don't know. Karen, don't they?
Yeah, so they're typically here for a month.
Yeah.
They were short-staffed this year, so they were not able to do as much hands-on here as normal. Plus, the fact that we used another firm to do some things throughout the year that contributed to the.
Oh, okay, last time.
Being here last time this year.
Okay, all right.
I had some questions for Ron, too. I think you cleared that one up was a court. Isabella County Trial Court was four thousand dollars institutional care, so that's probably childcare.
That's childcare. Yeah, that's.
My other one was that prescription. Did you have an opportunity to look to him to see if?
I did talk to the undersheriff. I don't know if you had an opportunity to dig into that any further.
I've got some information I can share, but I don't know what the questions are.
Well, my, my question is, is it, I don't remember this prior to January one. I don't remember seeing that on claims either. It was under a different line item and and maybe it wasn't so clear.
Well, in in the research that I did, the way it was previously done, there was a hard cap as part of the contract. So when they would do prescriptions until you met the hard cap, you wouldn't necessarily see the invoices like you're seeing now for the prescriptions. So it's being done a little bit differently, may I understand it? From the previous to the now, now you're seeing each month the prescription invoices. And that's why you're kind of picking up on the difference.
Yeah, it's two, two thousand, it seems to be right around two thousand a month.
Yeah, so they talked about, you break the bills down, so you have Oklahoma County inmates and Oskoosa gets billed and
Yep.
But the previous medical people were doing that billing up to thirteen five. So we weren't even seeing those bills. They were just.
So they were eating that cost? That was part of their contract?
That was part of their contractual cost with the hard cap. So once we reached past that thirteen five, then there would have been some invoices in the past over the previous contract that would have came here for the old ridges.
Quarterly. So that should have been, that should have been picked up with when we were comparing contracts.
Yeah, absolutely, because
That's a big cost.
Now I wonder how.
Well, and that's.
Makes you wonder how much a good deal we got.
I just was kind of, you know, as I was doing the research on it, we really won't be able to, like, till we take a six-month or a twelve-month snapshot and compare what we're saving on the contractual versus the pharmaceutical cost. We really just won't be able to put a number to it till at least six months, then we can kind of measure, are we saving that much to the contractual?
Right.
So.
And I suppose the cost will be dependent on whatever drug it is that we're needing to purchase, right? And so that that can go up and down by itself. We'll go back and look at the difference. I don't remember off the top of my head, but the difference was between the two contracts. I know it was substantial from what we were paying in the previous year, but yeah, after six months, we can do a pretty good projection to know if this was as good a deal as we thought, you know.
Yeah, the snapshot at six months, that's kind of what I was thinking and just kind of see where we're at, was that, where's that going with the savings?
Six months is in March, so it's not that far down.
And half that, half that two thousand was Oskoosa County.
Right, yeah.
Well, not quite half, but but still, is Oskoosa paying now? Are are we up to date there? They are good?
A check was received today.
So that's, that's good news. You could talk to them about utilizing the pharmacy that they're using and what did she say to you?
Um, they're using the pharmacy in Skidway.
Yep.
And actually down here, Little Red's, from what she spoke, they were gonna take over that building in the spring. And so they would have a local pharmacy. And it was the best deal.
Okay, so they did check on it.
It was the best deal around.
Because I'm surprised. They do a great business. They really do. They're convenient, they're quick. I'm not gonna deny it, but cost-wise. So I'm just surprised.
Some of it is the way that they package. Jail needs them in the bubble packs as opposed to just dispensing in a, you know, in a bottle. So they've got that individual bubble pack so that nobody's touching it and they know exactly what color it is.
Roasted drug does.
All the time and stuff. So I know that they checked a couple.
Okay, I was just.
Offered that service because that was needed. And delivery. Delivery is also another thing that I.
Right.
Don't know about that. Yeah, itemization, two of the bills, well, in the course of the history of the different pharmacies they went to, it started out with Oklahoma. They were getting bills even though there was a hard cap. Then the couple after those, Oklahoma, we weren't seeing them itemized as much. The previous contractual, we didn't really know exactly, other than what they were telling us, we were spending on pharmaceutical. We went back to Skidway. Before we changed this contract, we started getting the itemized bills again, so. It's, I mean, at least we can break it down that way, too.
Are you able to, if so, if someone's incarcerated, are you able to bill their insurance?
That question, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I don't know how you could it.
When they come into, they they fall under the county health insurance for being incarcerated is kind of all that work. I can't break it down to you, but when they come in, there's an obligation of the county and the jail to provide that health insurance.
Even if they have health insurance.
I believe so.
Well, I wonder, though, if we can't go after their insurance company, even though, just like, just like I get in Iraq, my insurance company goes after the other insurance company to get, get money back. They do it all the time.
It was just a question, because again, seeing two thousand dollars on there last month, this month, I hadn't seen it before. At least I didn't remember seeing it.
And I think that's mainly because of that card cap that was under the previous contract, so there wasn't as many bills coming through for pharmacy until the quarterly orgies.
You in the medical field, you well know, if they're a diabetic, they're.
Well, I understand. Yeah, that's why I was asking. I was surprised, honestly, by by Skidway Pharmacy, because by no means are they cheap. A lot of the chains, a lot of the chains pharmacy are much, much cheaper, but I'm just surprised that again, that you're not able to, and I don't know anything about it. You're not able to bill their insurance. It's sad, but thanks, Paul.
Do they have insurance is one question. And then the second question is, you know, you have a duty or the care level goes up when you get in jail.
Right, right, right. That makes sense. Thank you. Roll call vote. Thanks, Ron.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item eight, unfinished business, the medical examiner contract. I I watched on Zoom. Did you guys come up with a decision at the committee of the whole, a direction, I should say?
Maybe ask me to look at some neighboring counties to see who they're using for their medical examiners. I'm not totally completed that yet, but there is a bank of counties in our area, our region that are using company out of Big Rapids, and they have, I'm gonna say about twelve or thirteen counties that they service now. Aranet County uses an individual that I've identified, too. I have not been able to complete my survey yet to know, but one of the concerns that was expressed is if we were to change vendors for providing the services, the location of the actual autopsy. There was a concern expressed about not wanting to drive to Grand Rapids, for instance, for autopsies. That's just not something we're gonna be able to control, frankly. I mean, there are just certain facilities who can do it and others, most other places cannot. So that'll have to be a factor if we decide to go in a different direction. Obviously, we would issue RFPs, but one of the questions that we would have to ask is where are the autopsies performed? And then we can weigh whether or not that's an option that you want to select. So. But that's where it was left. And so the idea was they would report back, yeah, committee of the whole next week on those results.
I I think we definitely need to move forward with this. I I watched the two law enforcement agents that that came to the committee of the whole and and voiced their opinions, and I think they were very obvious opinions and very concerning opinions. I think we definitely need to act on this. Is my opinion on getting out of this contract and and finding another facility, institution that's able to do this. And we have two individuals coming to us telling us there's problems. I think the longer we wait on this, the higher the liability there is on this. And and I didn't get, I asked for that information from Saginaw County. Did you happen to locate it?
I've located, I know where it is. I just haven't had a chance to shoot it out yet. In quite a day, so.
Any comments?
I, I questioned EMS after the fact, after, you know, we heard from the officers. And, you know, I I know their feelings. I know, know the officers and whatnot. But one of the statements, they said that basically there, it sounded like there was nobody really other than one person in the medical field that was doing this, and that's far from the truth. Most everybody that's involved, as far as the, the ones that are doing the onsite, whatnot, are medically trained. Now, I don't know how much training they have in forensics and going into that, but I know that they're EMTs or paramedics or, or you know, safety officers. So I don't know if that statement was totally true, that there was only one that was involved in, in medical, so.
The statement that the the individuals from?
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
Saginaw.
Medical examiner investigators that come out locally that respond to a scene is what Ron's talking about.
Right.
What's your guys' opinion on this, Commissioner Serbeks?
I think we need to take an opposite, look at our options. I mean, if law enforcement was not happy.
Right.
Um, you know, we gotta look at what's, what's best for law enforcement, because you can make or break a case super easy, you know. An autopsy, causes death or, you know, however they rule it. So it's very important that, you know.
On autopsy, and causes death, or you know, however they rule it, so it's very important that, you know.
Commissioner Scott?
Uh, well, I feel the same way there, but yeah, we. Need to take a more in-depth look, but they, they came here with a, a heck of a package. And, and all the, all our share, all the stakeholders in this. Uh, thought it was a very good package and it, it has Saginaw County's fine, you know, it's not. And maybe we were, maybe we were sold a little bag of goods that. That's not gonna come through, I don't, I don't know, I saw. Uh, maybe we should take a look at some options and, and costs. If, if, if these people. Uh, have to go to Big Rapids or Kalamazoo or whatever, you know, we have, take a look at that cost. You know, um, maybe, maybe, maybe it isn't as, that bad going some distance, but. I don't know.
Yeah, I I agree with you, cost is definitely our end, but when we had two individuals bring these concerns to us, it didn't sound like it was one event, it sounded like, um, unless I misinterpreted it. It sounded like a few, uh, very serious.
I think that, being the outsider here. Because you guys did that before I sat on the board.
Oh, okay.
Sounds like the issues have resulted from this personnel change.
Well, no, I I mean, I, that's not what I took out of that, but you were on the board, cause we just passed that. We just passed a continuation, which was.
Continuation, but originally, but they, the personnel change hadn't occurred.
Right.
Point in time either, I'm just saying, I'm, from what I'm gathering is the original contract, cause there was one prior to this, correct? With the same.
Now, let's, let's, let's clarify, the contract that we have right now was approved in March of twenty twenty, which predates me by a couple of months as well. What we approved in December was the specific naming of a medical examiner, which we're required to do under statute. So each county has to name a medical examiner, when Dr. Bush parted ways with the institute. He was the person who was named as our medical examiner, so we needed to pass a resolution naming now, uh, I forget the gentleman's name, but the forensic, um, uh. ME, uh, down in Saginaw is now the quote unquote medical examiner. So we didn't do anything else with the contract, the contract is intact from what it was originally approved in March of twenty twenty.
Okay, so I'm wrong there, but at that opportunity, could we have opted out?
You have in the contract, um, you know, and and I'll again, repeat what I mentioned before, the contract. Is I believe very favorable to the county, uh, if the county decided to cancel the contract uh, without cause. Our obligation is only to give ninety days notice, and that's it. Now ninety days will give us ample time to turn around an RFP, review the uh, proposals that have come in and award a new contract. To begin the day after this one expires, so all of that, from a timing standpoint, could work. Uh, I don't advise issuing an RFP if we still have a contract in place, that's to say, if we issue an RFP, we need to have. Something to offer the vendors who are responding, we don't want to just issue an RFP and then decide, oh, well. Well, we nearly, we don't want to do anything with this, and you'll get a very bad reputation in a big hurry doing that, so, um.
Mid-contract, if this was the end of the contract, that'd be different.
Right, well, because then you would be, again, uh, casting a wide net.
I I don't know how we couldn't do this, I guess I'm not understanding how, how we have uh, individuals uh, that are professionals. Telling us, highly encouraging to do this, I don't, I don't know how we couldn't do this.
I don't have a problem. I don't have a problem doing, but I think we should do a little due diligence before we. Do anything like a ninety day letter, I mean, I think we need to talk to some neighboring counties, see how they're going, what. If, if they have a different one. Is there issues? What kind of issues is it, um, I imagine there's issues with anybody, but. What kind of issues it has or been, what kind of resolutions? Uh, programs been used, you know, to resolve the issues. Uh, the relationship, the length of term that they've been with this other company, everything, everything about them, you know. And because maybe, everybody has problems with. Medical exam.
Do you guys have?
They gotta be a different type of people to work with.
Do you guys have anything to add to this? Sheriff, can you come up, can you come up? Cause it sounded like, when I listened to the Zoom, it sounded like the mother officers. Thought you guys had some concerns as well, is that not true?
I thought Ladonna, Ladonna was gonna get involved in it, so I've been kind of waiting on her stance on that, actually.
I, I.
Have you heard from Ladonna at all on, on that?
I thought they kind of spoke for Ladonna, did they?
They, they were actually here at Ladonna's request, because she couldn't be here, uh.
I missed that meeting, I wasn't here, uh, for that particular meeting, so I, I don't know what was said with them.
She echoed those same concerns that were presented.
Okay.
At the committee of the whole meeting.
And it sounded like you guys did as well, your department did as well. Unless I misinterpreted that, I was listening on Zoom as well, so.
You know, there's, there's concerns there, I know they did it, they do a really good job at the scene, I, I don't have any complaints at the scene, but. Down in Saginaw, this, this, I, I basically left that up to junior or detective, this panel and all that stuff down there.
But do wanna point out that our county attorney, Don Kohonic, is on Zoom if you had a, any question about the legalities of the contract itself.
Cause he's looked at the contract?
Um, he's, he may have uh, seen it for the first time this afternoon.
Well, I think. We, we used Ladonna's recommendation for this company in, back in twenty twenty.
Yep, we did.
But that was a lot of structure, Dr. Bush was a very active partner, it's all thing. He came here, talked with us, you know, and I'm not hinging everything on particular people, but. Uh, she's now not very, not, she does not have, have full confidence with these people. As she thought she was going to, so I got it, I, you know, I think. Using the, the officers, using their prosecutor, those are all people that are in this thing, and sheriff's office too.
Frontline.
So, yeah, absolutely, so if they got concerns, then I got concerned.
Uh, and I think we need to act on this, sir, did you have anything on the phone to add? What's his name?
Don Kohonic.
Mister Kohonic? Oh, you're muted, I think, no?
No.
I can't hear you.
I see him waved.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I haven't, I have too many mute buttons, I guess, so. It's a lesson learned, um, yeah, I'm here, I don't know that I have a lot to add, I was listening to Mister Dolante, and uh, I think he described it well. He did point out that there's a typo in the contract where it says, uh, under the termination without. Pause provision, it says both sixty and ninety days, but I would, would recommend just going with the ninety days, uh, for termination. To be cautious, it sounds like you're al- already aware that you have to have an M, so, um. And it's, it's advisable not to have a gap or anything, so if you do elect to uh, go forward and terminate. Then, um. You know, like, to expeditiously to make sure you hire somebody new, um. I guess maybe the only other thing I would have to add is if you were to vote to terminate tonight, uh. I do believe you still need, we, we, uh, working with Mister Dolante would have to send a uh, termination letter to them. And that would actually affect the way.
It would actually what? What was the last thing you said that would actually what?
Well, I'm just looking at the contract, I do think, uh, we need, uh, if, if the county elects to terminate it. Then uh, it does need to send a termination letter to the contractor and uh, that's something we can work with the administrator. To make sure that gets out.
Do you think we'll have any difficulty finding another one?
I, I don't, um, but I don't, I haven't asked, so, yeah, I mean, I haven't asked if they're taking new clients or not. Uh, but I imagine, well, because they're sending me mail, that I receive probably every other month, a brochure saying, here we are. We're ready to serve you, I'm assuming they would be, um, and I say they, that's one company, I know of at least two. That are in the area, there may be more. We find.
They're, they, those cus, the customers of those, that's the ones we need to talk to.
Right.
Are there troopers in other areas that are having issues with those other company? I just don't wanna take on another, like I say, maybe all companies are like this and.
Where they have officers.
The worst.
I, I understand what you're saying, but when they have officers coming by Zoom to their meetings saying, hey, there's a real problem here. And that's, to me, that's as serious as it gets.
Well, I think this is what's happened in Saginaw County, and now we're starting to react to that. I'm just wondering if, um, Prescott County has, has, has a different one and. But has issues with theirs, I don't wanna drop one, take on another one that has issues. I wanna feel that whatever one I, that I vote for is gonna cure our issues.
And it's something.
Should we, should we ask for an action plan, should we, should we, uh. Um, ask the, ask the state troopers of, uh, at state, at the state police level, they'll help us craft. Uh, of an ex, a plan expectation, so that we can deliver to them and say, this is what we expect. The way you gotta cure this problem. Should we do it that way and, and offer them an opportunity to, to show us a plan?
Well, what their contract was just concerning to me, which when we did approve that back in March, was they get paid this, and and maybe this is true across the board, this would be the interesting question I would wanna know. They get paid the same, no matter how many autopsies they do, so if they do zero autopsies in a year, they still make the same amount of money if they do ten. So that would be my key question, so obviously, maybe that's why they're opting a- against or not so readily to jump on, um. The idea of an autopsy, no matter what, obviously that requires more personnel, more time, everything else, maybe that's why they're not, uh.
That'd be a fair question to ask.
Doing them as, as easily or as they should be.
That stands to reason, um, and to address, you know, any new, uh, you know, uh, vendor that might come forward. Part of what we do in the RFP process, we ask not only for references, but I wanna know who your municipal clients are, in this case, we'll be very specific. Who are the counties you're serving now, which gets our foot in the door to know who to call and ask these questions, so that's all part of that same process, we'd find that.
I think your secondary will be able to.
But you're, you're telling us that we can't do an RFP until we give them a ninety day notice, so you can't ask these questions.
He's recommending, no, no, I think you can ask anybody.
We can ask.
His customers, all their.
That's a direction that you told, what I'm understanding.
We can ask, I can call Washtenaw County tomorrow and ask about their satisfaction with their medical examiner. That's different than issuing an RFP that we send out to the vendors saying, we want your proposal because we're gonna hire somebody. If we don't have a termination of this contract. We don't have anybody to hire because we are already under contract.
I, I'm in favor, I understand what you're saying, but I'm in favor of, uh, the ninety day, uh. Removal of this contract, I opting out of this contract, but you guys wanna hold off?
Well, I'm not in, I'm not in a position to vote on doing that right at this meeting.
Okay, so you wanna put this at the committee of the hall?
Uh, yeah, but I think we, I'd like to give the administrator direction to start checking with other counties and how they're. How they're being treated with whoever they got.
Commissioner Serbrook?
I would agree, I think, you know, we obviously need to take that anybody, um, you know, if we. Get to the point where we issue the RFP and we get, let's say, three, we can get contact with, you know. Sheriff's Office, the state police and say, these are the three companies that have submitted RFPs to us. Reach out to your cohorts, because these are their clients, because they'll obviously provide us a client list, reach out to these guys. And find out what their opinion of that service is, you know, we don't wanna go like.
Do that until we opt out of this ninety.
I agree, that's what I'm saying, is once we issue that RFP, it'd be nice if we could take, you know, find out some information. Before that happens.
So that's what you, which way you going here?
I don't know why we can't, why can't we call another county?
Call the county, he said, call the, the, the institution.
Okay, I, I don't know why we can't do that without have the terminate. I don't know why we can't do that while we're under contract.
You can ask all the questions you wanna ask.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is you don't issue the RFP if you don't intend to issue a contract. So RFP is the formal request, tell me how much it's gonna cost me for you to perform this service.
Right.
Right, and we take those under seal bid and so on, but in the meantime, if you want me to call, name a person and say, how is, uh. Your experience with your medical examiner, yeah, we're free to do that.
Because, because I, I agree that we don't wanna start an RFP unless we terminate first. We terminate ninety days and then call out to all these other stakeholders, if they don't get back with us the time. We can be without a medical examiner.
I asked that question, he has confidence that we won't be, I asked the question.
But I mean, to do enough diligence. I, I, I think we're relying on a lot of different parties here to do what we should be doing ourselves.
Understandable, but remember, the longer we carry on with this contract, they brought concerns to us, that's more liability for this county.
Yeah, let me throw one more thing on the table for you, and this, again, the ninety day period will allow for this. Uh, we cast the wide net, we get proposals in, you have the ability to call these vendors in and interview them. Right, you gotta do it in this, this format, which is fine. But you get an opportunity to talk directly to that provider and say, okay, what is your response going to be if this happens? And what commitment can we get from you to do?
Well, that's.
Autopsies, um, and, and what does that mean to you, and so you can get those questions answered directly from the vendors, and you'll have them on record.
Well, before we do that, I, I, because I don't think we're at a point where we know the questions to ask. Unless we ask the state police, the sheriff's office, the, the city police, uh, everybody concerned. To come in and ask the questions themselves, so we can hear it, other than that, I don't know the question to ask.
Yeah, I'm not saying we don't have some work to do.
Yeah.
But it's another option that you have.
Commissioner Serbrook, what did you wanna do, did you wanna put off, get more information, or did you wanna vote on this tonight to, um, to opt out of this ninety day contract?
I'll vote tonight.
You will?
I will.
Mr. Vaughn?
No, wait.
So now what? What do I do?
I'm with Craig.
I have two, yeah, two waits and two goes.
Yeah.
Let's not get ahead.
Well, if, if, go ahead and make the motion, call for the vote, but if it's a tie, it fails.
I don't have to make a motion right now, I'm asking opinions.
Well, but if you wanna act on it, you have to make a motion.
What do you think? I'm asking for direction from my administrator.
What you do is call Brad and tell him to get to the next meeting, so.
Okay, again, my concern is with the liability for the county, I, I, I took those uh, concerns very serious, as I think you all should have. Item nine, administrator's report.
It's a very brief report, all related to the bond, as, um, uh, Mister McGalton said, our bond sale is scheduled for February twenty second at eleven o'clock. Uh, and why we are wanting to do this now, is, I'm sure you've been following the news, there is a. Strong likelihood of rate hikes very soon in the interest rate, we wanna get in before that happens. And hopefully get the best, um, interest rate possible. Now, yesterday, the treasurer and I sat in on the ratings call with Standard and Poor's, it went very well. At four forty PM today, we were notified that we have affirmed our A plus rating, which is what we were, our goal was. It would have been nice to go up, but the likelihood of that happening, for the county our size was not high. Uh, but we did receive some very positive feedback, and so we're, we're very pleased with that. And I will not take up any more of your time.
That was it?
Yeah, that's it.
Holy smokes. Item ten, elected official and department head reports, clerk.
Uh, Brett Gilner, Oklahoma County Clerk, um, I am just reminding everybody up here. April nineteenth is your deadline to file for county commissioner. Um, and.
And it also includes. Other elected officials across the county.
I was just gonna say township.
And city.
Clerks that.
What?
Resigned.
Right.
And so, they need to. Yeah, the vacancies, so they appointed. Coming township, um, same thing. Uh, we are for sure having a May election, right now, we just have the Whitmore Prescott area schools. Um, filed so far, so we will have three elections this year. Um, that's. Pretty much it, next week I'll be coming to you with some other personnel issues.
The mayor has a question for you.
A mayor? No, I think I was going to just clarify. I think because the city is nonpartisan, they filed for the general election in November. So their signature and submission is later in July to August because we're the city. Council was submitting for the general election versus the primaries. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Treasurer? I'm going to have you guys come up because it's hard when you're on Zoom. It's hard to hear anything. Thank you.
Yes, it comes back to us. And we do the ballots.
So.
So essentially, everything on the ballot goes through the clerk's office. Thank you.
Karen Bigloss, Oklahoma County Treasurer. Um, our office is mailing going out February first for forfeiture and foreclosure notices. Tim and I have been diligently working on the jail rebounding, which has been very exciting. First time I've done a ratings call. It was very educational for myself. Um, I've been busy organizing information for the upcoming land meeting, which you are all welcome to attend uh February ninth at ten A M. And I'm off to a conference. We're obviously this weekend, so. Mac Conference, which is an association of county treasurers, looking forward to the educational sessions. Networking with.
Where's that?
At Shane Creek in Bel Air.
Oh, good, right.
Yes.
Don't don't break a leg ski in if you go ski.
I will be skiing.
Or snowboard.
Thank you. Sure, come on up.
Anyway.
Sheriff Brian Gilbert, Oklahoma County. Good evening, everyone. I just want to give you a little briefly, an update on our COVID situation at the jail. Uh, we had, we had two staff members uh kind of. Contract uh COVID. And then we had two other staff members who needed to be quarantined because of the exposure. And turns out, we had a total of eleven inmates and they're in two different cell blocks. So eleven uh inmates coming down with that, we immediately locked down. And and what that means is lock everybody in place. No one is to bring anybody in. And all our all our arrest, our felonies, WIs and the assault, assault and crimes went to Roscommon. Which we did that same favor for Roscommon about two months ago. So we interned, so actually, they're paying us back, so um with that in mind, um. We have seven inmates in Roscommon right now. That is our inmates as they're holding for us. But tomorrow, uh Friday tomorrow, we're going to retest our jail. And we're hoping that we're going to be good. Uh, the 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 people inside the jail. Look normal. I mean, there's no sick people there. It doesn't look like they're sick. And hopefully, we can get that reopened, get the seven inmates back where where they need to be. And then we can bring in uh arrestees. So that's what we're at on that. And in with that in mind, it's all because. Uh, we do have a COVID policy. The template was was made by M D O C. Um, it it was a template. So with that in mind, Lieutenant Oger put together. A a a plan that fits our jail, took that template and and conformed it to our jail. And he put that in place uh four twenty seven, twenty twenty, so it's been in place for a while. And then M D O C came in and inspected that policy to make sure, number one, we're doing it. And and that we have it in place. And we passed with flying colors. We we were top grade. And everybody in the state had to had to conform to this. So with with our lieutenant doing this. Restricted our inmates from all getting getting this disease, so we we limited to to eleven inmates. And we have like sixty over there. So that was a great job by him. He needs a big pat on the back and uh we've been in contact over the weekend, all week. And and he's been giving me updates on what's happening there, so. Anyway, hats off to to Mr. Forham on that, doing a great job for us.
Was any inmates hospised?
When it when it first took off, there was.
Or admitted to, I should say.
No, 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 there was one, there was one that was taken to the hospital the very first day, and that was hospice inmates, so. I'm not going to give names or anything, but but I think that's how how it started. So anyway, we took care of that problem, that inmate. Uh, we got him out of there right away, so we got. Let's go, so. Uh, any questions concerning that?
I I thought your text message said twenty one inmates.
Yeah, that's what that's what was told to me originally.
It's like, holy crap, that's a big number.
Well, it was ten and one and and eleven and one. Well, it turns out it was eleven total, so, yeah. And I just found that out. I found this information out a couple days ago, so.
So I got copied on the email from Lieutenant Oger. I thought it was very informational.
Absolutely.
Very timely.
Very good.
And also your text message timely. Yes, yes.
Just said twenty one, twenty one.
I got a ten minute look because I got the wrong number again, so I'm going to loop you into that text, so that's that's my plan is that I got a group text.
Are we having to pay Roscommon per day per inmate?
I don't believe so. I think it's a trade off.
It'd be nice.
We didn't charge them, did we?
Yeah, no, don't quote me. I don't know. I'm not sure.
Oh, we did?
We did invoice for us.
Okay.
They pay?
I haven't received payment yet, but they have been invoiced.
Okay.
I'm sure they will. We know.
Hey, maybe we can, if they don't, if if they don't want to pay ours, we don't have to pay theirs.
So you guys have a policy uh it because of me and a provider had a conversation about this um when I got your text, actually, and I'm like, holy smokes, twenty one, that's a big number. But anyways, um he just said, you know, uh, what is their policy? I'm like, I I don't know. I I don't know. We haven't. I haven't asked.
And you'll see, we we tweaked it to fit our jails.
He asked if 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 vaccines were are being offered um and and if they're being tested prior to coming in, which I'm assuming they are.
When when they come in initially get arrested and come into the uh. The the block where they're being booked, they're tested before they even go into our jail. And if they're they're okay, then they go into uh holding cells. And then before, if if they get sentenced and they go to the back, they're tested again before they go to the back.
It's complex.
There's there's some good testing.
It's a complex process.
Yeah, yeah. If there's no questions there, I'm going to, I'm going to bring up uh Deputy Vetter and he can give an update on that U S D grant. You're okay with that?
Is your staff members okay? I'm sorry. Is your staff members okay? Everybody's okay? Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just how's Plan B coming along?
What Plan B?
Plan B, because Plan A isn't is here and not in school.
Right, right.
Plan B.
Plan B is August. We're getting through.
Well, I mean, Plan B for coverage of our of O R V enforcement. That's going to really start like May first, as soon as the snow is gone, you know.
We'll put our heads together. We'll make it happen.
Good.
So we do have coverage. Yeah, you were going to look into that, Paul. We talked about that the last meeting as far as the individuals that are kind of on uh occasional.
Yeah, we do have an idea as far as a requirement for how many hours that we're required from the part timers, but we also have another part timer that we're looking at. It's already on full certified. I may be able to give us some cover. So we do have a couple of different options, given the current circumstances. We we're going to make sure that O R V is covered.
But Commissioner. Commissioner Serbuk said you were putting together a policy and procedure. When you do that, can we see it?
For.
For what your procedure was for keeping on occasional employees. Correct? Isn't that what you would say?
I won't tell anybody when they're out there. I just, I just want to know that we're covered because your report from last year was that we didn't use all the money.
No, we didn't.
We didn't, so we we didn't, we didn't enforce as much as we should have. And I just don't want to see do that again. I want to, I want to go ahead and.
I agree.
Go to full time enforcement. So.
Absolutely.
Plan A just didn't work out just yet.
We got Plan B coming.
Yeah, Plan B.
Deputy Better.
Just want to see it.
Nice to meet you. I talked to you on the phone.
Right. I'll turn that right over to you. Spoke with Bryce Paulson, who's our U S D A home specialist that we have to deal with for our U S D A grants. I think he spoke with you, didn't he, Tim? There was a slight issue with the grant we submitted. Um, in years past, when the county has submitted to U S D A, there's always been a balanced budget. And this year's budget, there was, it was off.
By. Let's let's clarify. There was, we projected a surplus.
Right.
At the end of the year in the general fund. And according to Mr. Paulson, that would made it would have made it a little more difficult for them to provide us with the grant. But once I explained to Mr. Paulson that there were no reserves here and that this is kind of an important thing, he was relieved to hear that, but even more so. Uh, that we had worked on that capital improvements plan uh last year, was able to submit a copy of that plan and uh he replied by email. Uh, that was a tremendous help because the department had already projected uh but the vehicle rotation was going to need to be over about the next five years, if I remember right. Uh, so that provided him the roadmap he needed to justify approving the grant, so I'm hopeful. Based on that, that we're going to get a.
He sent me um a little bit more breakdown. Of what you guys discussed. Basically, he would like Chairperson to sign it. Um, and have it attested by the clerk. Did I?
Is this what I need to sign?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the back page, I think is where it's the breakdown of additional.
So do we need a motion to approve this?
Um, I don't think so because you've already moved to apply for the grants and what this is is just a clarifier verification of what.
Just wanted to put it on the record, why, you know, the the clarification of the the difference of the money. You know. And that way I can get that back to him tomorrow to continue with our U S D A.
Did uh? Did he give you any indication when you're talking to him about the multiple requests? Was he surprised about any of the?
No, he was very happy, actually.
So like the boat that wasn't out of the ordinary for somebody to ask for a boat?
Department wise, yes. Most departments ask for vehicles or facilities, um, but.
Just because we never asked before, I was just wondering if maybe he says, oh, I hear these all the time, you know?
No, there wasn't, wasn't, it was more of the vehicles and equipment and what they're normally do or facilities.
Okay.
Um, but again, they're very happy. He shouldn't have a better answer for us spring on whether it's, you know, we're going to get all four or two now and two again in the in the fall. Uh, just going to depending on funding.
Yeah.
And how much they get at what time. Um, sounds like they're going to start, he'd like to start getting, give us all for one shot, but obviously, that's not up to him. That's up to us. The higher fees, and so.
When you say facilities, what do you?
Oh, they. Built like buildings for fire hall or sheriff, you know, new jails, stuff like that, people, you know.
Good.
They didn't. County's apply for that.
If if they'll just give us a big check for the jail, we won't have all this bonding stuff. We can pay it off.
That's before my time, so that's.
The bill is here in your time, yeah.
But anyway, that's that's all I needed.
Okay, thank you.
Continue on. As soon as I get more information from them, I'll be more happy to pass it on to you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I will say, I contacted the sheriff and thanked him. Um, I've heard from a lot of my townships, they are seeing the night road patrol out and very happy.
Absolutely. I'm hearing the same thing.
We're getting it done.
I'm hearing the same thing.
Uh, any other elected officials or department heads? I think Jeff, do you have anything? You're you're on me. Oh, go ahead.
There we go. Uh, yeah, Jeff Nichols, Veterans Office. Um, as you all heard. Eric David has submitted his resignation and uh has decided to take on a new position out of state. Uh, his dream job is really what it is. And so I will be most likely coming to you next month to, once I talk to the Veterans Committee. Uh, to see what they want to do as far as har hiring another uh individual to take over, take over his place. And then uh we also will be having to advertise for one of our committee members. Although Larry Boyce has already stated he would continue on in the position, but by statute, we're required to advertise it. And that's all I really have.
So will you be hiring for uh Eric's position again, Jeff?
Well, he's going to come next week.
Yeah, it, yeah, he ends next week. His last day is the fourth of February.
And you're going to be, you have to come to us and then you'll advertise for it.
Correct.
Okay, because when.
Yeah, I just got to see what my veteran committee wants to do first.
Okay, all right, perfect. Thank.
That's what I suspect. I suspect they, you know, they're going to want to uh fill the position. Uh, and we we've we've talked, I've talked to a couple of them already. Uh, so we kind of, I kind of have an idea where they're going, so, but uh we'll, we have our committee meeting on the second, so we'll discuss it then.
Thank you. Any other department elected officials or department heads on the phone? Item eleven, managers from the floor. I don't think there are any, correct? Item twelve, motions for adoption. This uh, we talked about this email that we received. I think everybody got a copy of it. Tim, did you want to?
Memorandum from council concerning the uh Kirtland Community College Village.
We talked about releasing this from to the public. Does everybody have an opportunity to look at this?
Yeah, I guess.
Any questions, concerns? I'll agree that this is good to release.
Definitely.
So I'm going to make a motion to release the memorandum. For withdraw from Oklahoma County from Kirtland Community College District from our legal counsel, Cole Stroker and Tasky.
Work, new support.
Little motion for support, Commissioner Serbuk. Any further discussion on it? No, roll cover.
Uh, Mark Sir Brock.
Yes.
Fran Vaughn.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item thirteen, committee reports. Commissioner Von.
Uh, met with Rose City, um, I think the big topic there was uh, we're looking forward. Uh, the fire chief and uh one of the other firefighters was in, they're getting a new truck come. I think the new new fire truck will be there maybe within the next month or two. They uh. They're having some trouble getting some frame rails at the company wherever they were. I think they're building it in Florida, I believe. So that's going on. Uh, met with Goodr Township. Um, and also talked to Mike Bowers, um, that was mentioned at committee of the whole on uh. Their siren, their siren is. Hundred years old or whatever. It's it's not working. They invested, uh, emergency manager invested. I believe it was four grand last summer trying to get it up so it would work from dispatch, so they could trip it. Well, when they got it hooked up and tripped it, the siren still won't go off. It's something in the siren itself. Um, they can replace that siren at uh five, six thousand dollars, but life expectancy, talking to the company, there's only two or three years. So um, they're better off taking some of the money from emergency management and purchasing a new siren. And getting it up on a pole and uh and then it would have a one mile um distance rating, um, which would really help the community. Um, we had uh district health the other day, Mark and I. Um, pretty informative, uh, kind of did the beginning of the year. Further chair and vice chair and. And uh. Spot it.
With the sirens, because I think you guys brought that as up at the last meeting as well for some of the ARBA funds. Um, wasn't that the whole purpose of that emergency um uh notification across the the phones? I mean, not that sirens are 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 bad by any means, but I I thought we were kind of uh trying to transition to.
Well, I think it is, but I think if you get up in that area, um, you're pretty, you're pretty hard. Yeah, you're pretty hard for cell coverage or uh or uh. Yeah.
Because these sirens are pretty costly and and again, I thought that's being.
About twenty five thousand.
Yeah.
And and that, I I talked to Tim about that and I said, um, emergency management has quite a bit of that funding there. Um, I know you guys were talking about cameras, you know, in the building here. Um, actually, I think the ARBA funds would be better used for the the building here. And the cameras and then the emergency management money used for the public for for that project.
Yeah, just that emergency alert system. I don't hear anybody even talking about it.
Yeah.
Um, across the the phone alert any anymore.
I have it on my phone, but I just.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Commissioner Serbuk?
Excuse me. I attended a Clacken Township meeting. And. District Health. I will add, my Clacken Township meeting, they're part of the Rose City in that fire district, so they. Were talking about the truck too. They had a big old picture of it. It was pretty, could be a nice looking truck. Um, again, this commissioner wants to say, we attended, uh. District Health. They have two open positions. I actually won't. They had their IT person resigned. And they now entered into contract with a vendor, instead of having somebody integral within health department to do their IT work. They entered into a contract with the company, I have a SCODA to provide their IT support. Um, they just lost their financial. Guy, so they're gonna be advertising for somebody to be their financial supervisor. I'm not sure exactly what his title is.
Bean Connor?
Yeah, okay, Bean Connor, okay, yep. Uh, attended West Brainerd City. EMS and Sting. Sting put out their, uh. Two thousand twenty-one annual report. If any commissioners would like to look at it, I have a copy of it here. I can make more copies. Gives their major case breakdowns, tells how much, um, how many arrests they made on my search warrants were executed. Drug forfeiture or confiscations. So anyway, I have it. There's a one of note. One of their major cases happened last month here in Oklahoma County where there was an employee of UPS. Who was not delivering packages of drugs like he was supposed to be, but. Taken him off the back of the truck and saw him on the street. So Sting ended up popping him at full admission. That's full service.
Saying that he was supposed to deliver packages of drugs?
Yes, they mailed drugs through the, they sent them to UPS.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner Scott.
Get bills and plain brown packaging.
I get.
Not that I get anything like that, but you know.
My understanding is most of these were going to veterinarian's offices, like ketamine, things like that, that are veterinary, but they're.
Wow.
Used on the street for various nefarious uses.
Commissioner Scott.
Well, I reported any other townships last time, but Oklahoma Township, I, I went to. Gave my report. They just had, they didn't have anything that was. Going. I went to road commission meeting, uh, last week. Uh, they had some open. Grievances. The, uh, the, uh, employee didn't, didn't wanna go into closed session, so. Openly talked about that. That was a lot of the meeting. Um. And then talked about some of the projects and stuff, stuff like that. And then planning, planning commission was last night. We reinstated our, our board for the year. Um. We, um. We are going to have a, a meeting next month that'll have a public hearing in it, cuz we're gonna make some text amendments. There's a. There's a proposed Dollar General out in. Churchill Township. That is gonna go, we're waiting, we're gonna wait until Churchill listens to it and gives whatever recommendations. They may, they may have. Before we do anything, there will have to be a zoning change there. Because that property is not zoned business. So, uh, eventually. It'll come to us, so. We'll see what, what goes there.
You'll let, you'll let us know when, when that meeting is, cuz I've had numerous Churchill residents.
February twenty-third.
Is when you're gonna be discussing that?
Uh, I don't know if that's gonna come. Uh, you know, I, I prob, I would say. Probably so, because there'll be a Churchill Township meeting in between.
Yep.
So I would probably say that that would come up on the agenda.
It is going to. I've had numerous.
Well, unless, unless, unless the. The client or unless the company doesn't want to pursue, pursue it.
I had numerous residents in Churchill Township already approached me. They've already started a petition on this.
Oh, yeah.
Got a lot of people talking and pretty upset.
Yeah. Well, our policy is, has been just not, not a written policy, but. Because we, the county does. The zoning for the, all these townships other than. Three entities in the county, West Branch Township, the city of West Branch, and Edwards, they do their own zoning. We do the rest of the county. We don't have to take any, any, we don't have to do anything with the township at all. They have no play in planning and zoning. Because they opted out of it. And they opt the county to do it. So, but courtesy wise, we let the county, the townships. Listen to it first.
And you do listen.
The applicants don't even have to go there. We recommend that the applicants go there.
You do take into consideration.
We take into concern.
Opinion slash vote is on it, correct?
We, I can say, I can truthfully say that we have gone against. Some townships. Recommendations. Okay. So what I'm saying is, we're not held by law to take their recommendation and, and run in that, in that fashion. There has been cases that we've gone against what they recommended.
Okay, so I can pass that on. You said February.
Case by case.
February twenty-third.
Yes.
What time?
Time.
Seven o'clock.
And that's.
In the annex building.
Okay.
A block down the street.
Cuz again, they were already petition started. I think I got two phone calls alone yesterday on that.
And we, we allow public comment. But we also, one time in a meeting, and we also adopted the commission's. Rules on public comments, so they mirror what we have here.
There's, there's a lot of little stores, um, and I'm gonna speak briefly on it. There's a lot of little stores in the area that if this does take place, it will negatively impact. So anyways. Are we done? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Um.
Okay. Um, I think all I've attended since the last one was EDC. Uh, they did hire a new director. She starts February first. Um, also, the new committee members are, uh, chairperson is Phil. He's gonna be our new, uh, chair, and I think he'll do a very, very good job.
Steven?
Pardon me?
Phil Stevens.
Uh, no, Phil from MSU. There's, there's, yes, it was coming. There's. Um, Michigan Works, yeah, Michigan Works meeting is at ten thirty. I've also been in, uh, contact with Ryan Veder. Uh, the village is having some, uh, pretty bad ordinance issues. So I know he was gonna take some recommendations back to your next meeting as well. Got some campers over there that.
Chris guy?
Yes.
Yes, he, he brought up, he brought up that, no.
Good. Um. So hopefully that's going to be addressed. How he's involved with that, he's their ordinance officer. Um.
Phone there though.
Also, I've been in correspondence with, uh, Senator Vanderwall's office related to the Wright River Drain District. The last correspondence I had, I had got received one last week. I had forwarded to Tim. They were looking for some further information, and I believe you sent that to them, and then I received a message again this week. Requesting my contact information, which I did provide the email from Jamie. Uh, who was in on the meeting with Senator Vanderwall. Could you please provide me, that's a contact. I've talked with our contact with Michigan Association of Counties, and they are willing to give you a call to discuss Oklahoma's situation in the Wright River intercounty drain district. And that was January twenty-fifth, and I haven't heard anything yet, so.
Um, just a thought. Director of Michigan Association of Counties is, um. Read the newsletters, uh, talking about how often they visit the counties, and I think. Visit to Oklahoma County might be in order. I could certainly give him a call and see if I could schedule him for one of our meetings.
That would be great. He's supposed to call me. What are the chances of that?
Yeah.
He calls me, I'll give him. I gave him my, I gave him my cell phone information that I said, please call me anytime, day or night. I'm available and I will answer.
Come back.
So. Um, you provided them that information. You've received no contact back, correct?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so. I think that's all for me. Anything else, guys? Uh, general public comment, item fourteen. This is for, uh, any subject matters. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Item fifteen, I don't think we have closed session, correct? Item sixteen.
I'll, uh. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, Commissioner Scott. With support from myself. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries at seven oh nine. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming, sir.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Appreciate that information.